Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. It's Thursday, June 3rd of 2021. Well, let me start since we're still in a virtual, partial virtual world. Let me take attendance here. We've got Howard Burgess, Jim Hall, Annie McCain, Mary Beth, myself, and Jerry, I think is trying to connect.
Jerry's here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. We're covered up by a box here, dialogue box. And did I miss anyone? Okay. Approval of the agenda for this meeting. We do need, we do have some guests here from Velco who would like to speak to us again tonight. So if we could add that to the agenda. If someone would move to approve it with that addition.
So move.
Thanks, Howard.
How, how are you? So move, yeah.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, Andy? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed. Okay, public comment. We could just go to Velco here. We've got, I see Doug Best, Sandy Fogg, Shannon Luzell, and Nick, are you also from Velco?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Let's turn the floor over to whoever wants to speak. This evening, welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. So Barbara, just so you know, I'm retiring in July, so Nick Johnson is going to be the project manager for our North Rutland project. So Nick's going to do the presentation this evening. We had filed our 45 day notice here back in early May, so we typically try to reach out to the select board and the planning commissions. So we met with, what was it? That was a week or so ago. So Nick's going to do the presentation this evening for our North Rutland project. So Nick, if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm able to share anything from my screen.
Hang on one second.
You've been a bussy.
Now you can.
Is it time to go to bed?
Now you can, Nick.
Okay.
And if whoever's not speaking right now, if they could mute themselves? And.
There we go. All right. Are y'all able to see my screen?
Uh, yeah.
Because I actually have to click the button.
There you go.
All right. So yeah, good evening, everyone. As Doug mentioned, my name is Nicholas Johnson. I'm a fairly new project manager for Velco, although I've been managing projects for a few years now. Born, raised in Vermont, but I was working Eastern Pennsylvania until this past April. So the project presenting here tonight is our North Rutland substation at 2205 Post Road, which you can see on my screen here, if I can zoom in a little bit. I believe we came to the, this committee recently to, for involving our land purchase about 31 acres from the Thomas property. I can have that screen here. So this is currently where substation footprint previously was, almost kind of postage stamp. We've acquired about the area highlighted in blue, just to give us more flexibility moving forward. So this project is standard for Velco. It's our substation condition assessment project where we effectively move around the state and assess our, our substations for any conditions that need to be upgraded to meet reliability in current standards. So we performed the assessment for the substation, identified some work that did need to be done, primarily on the subtransmission, the 46 KV side. I should say this is a shared facility with Green Mountain Power, as indicated here. So it's kind of the northernmost section of the substation. There's a, about a barrier, boundary, excuse me, between these two properties and the remaining is Velco, plus the new property we purchased. So our, our plan for construction, instead of building a temporary, full temporary substation to, to complete this work, de-energized, completed safely, we will actually be utilizing some existing structures and can build the new structure, the 46 KV bus and, and in the area kind of listed, shown in the red here. So we will be utilizing the existing transformer. Moving forward, we're just going to use it as a temporary and then during an outage, move it over. So the existing fence is in the blue. We will need a new control house to fit the new control equipment. And so that is shown in the red here, and we will need to expand the fence to accommodate that new control house. Some area shown and there's some tree clearing that will be needed to accommodate this work, along with some planned aesthetic planning, plantings after we're done. For access for construction during this time window, we're looking at starting next year. We reviewed, kind of, we considered trying to come through the Thomas or the Moore's property, but actually were able to, to utilize effectively the existing driveway and have a good footprint here without impacting any wetlands that we can use for a temporary lay down yard in construction. So that's really kind of about a high level of the game plan for construction here. Can you get more into the details? I guess, is there any questions on that or from the, from the group?
I guess not, Nick.
All right. Doug, is there anything else you think I should touch on?
No, I guess not. It's just our typical 248 filing, and we're looking to actually do the filing coming up here in July. And you'll receive notice when we actually do the filing.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like anything has changed since you were, you came for the subdivision. Approval, and yeah.
Yeah, nothing really of material. I think we have a better idea of how we want to approach our construction, but it's, it's more, nothing from a footprint standpoint, I believe.
And, and certainly if anybody has any questions along the way, they can, they can reach out to Nick or Shayna, who's on this call, you know, to answer any questions. Their contact information was included in the 45 day notice letter that went out.
Yeah, anything from the group here? We appreciate you coming and, and doing all of this communication with us. And allowing us a chance to get caught up on the 45 day notice.
Of course. Thank you for, for allowing us to kind of hop in on the agenda here today. And as Doug said, if any questions, I know it might have been a lot quickly and not ahead of time, although as you said, nothing's really changed. So if anything comes up, any questions, you see the construction going on, have anything questions whatsoever, you know, at the beginning of next year, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Yeah, you were, you were hoping to still start construction this year?
No, so we will be looking to, to complete our CPG filing next month. Hoping to receive the CPG approval early next year, so construction in the February timeframe. And, and completing the end of next year.
Okay. Well, thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming again.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Take care.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Any other members of the public join us?
Hello, Barbara, this is Dana.
Yes, Dana.
Uh, I'm just calling in because I'm in transit, so I just thought I'd let you know that the phone number that you have, if it ends in 1907, it's me.
Okay. Okay. We can hear.
I'll mute myself.
That'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so nothing under, no other public comment? Nothing under new business? We can move down to old business and the first item there is about the Conservation Commission. And this is on the select board's agenda for next Tuesday. They'd asked us to come up with some ideas and to kind of let them, let them know, inform them of what other municipalities around the state do with, or have done with conservation commissions. So since we're on the agenda, if we could compile something for that evening along those lines. Mary Beth, you've been the, the champion here of this idea. Have you had any other thoughts or have you given us some ideas for next week?
So I haven't reached out to the other towns yet beyond reaching out to Middlebury, like we discussed last time, but I can try to do that tomorrow and get it to you and Bill. Just anything else that I find out that we can share with them. But I haven't reached out to any other town since then.
Yeah, the, the one pager that we sent to the select board and it was in your, in the packet for this meeting. It has a pretty good paragraph about how the commissions are used around the state. It doesn't specify which towns, but it gives a pretty good idea of what has been done. I think that might suffice. I, you know, I think we could go with that and maybe go with some ideas of what we want to do. If we're ready to make some decisions along those lines.
I also, I reached out to, we haven't connected over phone. Yeah, we tried last Friday, but the, one of the presenters at the meeting that we went to, or the, the workshop that we went to about starting a conservation commission, Jens Hilke. So we've been trying to connect, so I'll try again tomorrow with him. Because he had some other ideas on other towns with a recreation focused mission. So we had asked the question during that workshop and he said that there are several towns across the state, and I think he gave Bradford as an example of a, a conservation commission primarily focused on recreation and trails. So if that's, you know, the route that we want to go. Obviously, there'd be an educational component to some extent also, but I think we had agreed that we were initially going to start on, on with a recreation focus.
That was one of the ideas, yeah. Bill, could you put up that document I sent you late this afternoon? This is something that was sent out to everyone a few, a couple, two or three meetings ago. And it, it's, it's a little more in-depth than the one pager that the select board initially got and what you got in your packet. But if you go down to powers and duties of conservation commissions after, yeah, right there. So under statute, there's a list of things that, that a commission may do. And, and the first is making, you know, natural resources inventories and studies. And these could be used, if you go to the next page, there's a number of things that could be inventoried. And this information could be used in the town plan. It could be used in an act 250 application and that sort of thing. Number two is another kind of inventory. And this one concerns, instead of natural resources, it's historic, cultural, architectural, archaeological values. So they could, you know, go around town and come up with a list of those sorts of things that might be, might lead to projects or be important in the future or come up in an act 250 application. And then three is purchasing land or rights to land. Four is receiving money. I assume that's for the land purchases. That's a little, not quite sure what that is. Five definitely is receiving money and gifts to go for conservation purposes. Six is another receiving, this is receiving gifts of land. Seven is administering those lands, those conservation lands. Eight is assisting the local planning commission or the district environmental commission, just singling those out because those are applicable to us for environmental evaluations. Nine is cooperating with the local legislative body, the Select Board Planning Commission and other municipal private organizations on matters affecting the local environment or the natural resources. 10 is preparing, collect, publish, advertise and distribute relevant books, maps and other documents. And 11, these are all, they're under statute, but they're all may, you know, conservation commission may do these things. 11 is make a, a brief annual report to the municipality. So if you, Mary Beth, if you have time to, you know, research what towns are doing what, and Brad, Bradford, I think you mentioned for the recreational. If you have time to do that, that would be great. I'm thinking that maybe we pick some, some, some things from this list, one thing or two or three things that we think most apt for this group and, and have that as another part of our my conversation with the select board next week. If, if anything in there? And it looks like we might have to add the, just, you know, if we just wanted to go with a recreational emphasis.
Well, I think administering land, but I forgot how it was worded. If you could go, I think it was like six or seven. I think that would be applicable to assisting with the park.
That would be the closest thing, I think.
Yeah, administer the lands, properties and other rights which have been acquired by the municipality, like if we wanted to put in trails, you know, just working with the pocket park.
It'd be the closest, but I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure the town is ready to hand over, you know, official administration.
Right, right. It would just be, yeah.
How about the, what do people think of that number two? The inventorying historic and cultural, archaeological? What do you folks?
I think what we're doing with the pocket park has a lot to do with, you know, the, you know, looking at the historic and the history of that particular area and incorporating it with the park.
Yeah, that's going to happen regardless of whether there's a conservation commission. So, you know, if we take the next step and go to the conservation commission, it would be looking at other parcels in other sites around town. What do other folks think? I what, what should be our emphasis? What, what should be the highlights of what we, what we think this? Then again, we haven't really had any kind of a vote really on whether to go ahead with this. So I'm just assuming that most people are in favor of that, but, but speak up, please. If that's not the case.
Well, Barb, it'd be interesting to see what Mary Beth comes back with once she talks to, you know, a few of these other towns and see what they're doing. See how, how it's going.
Yeah. Yes, but we're kind of running out of time to get some sort of consensus here before we go to the select board, unless you want me to go to them Tuesday and say we're not ready.
That would probably be a good idea. I've been working, working 50 hours a week of my normal job and then have the, the farm business. I haven't had much time to devote to, to this. So if we could push it off one more meeting and maybe just give them a heads up. And we could probably give them a heads up before the meeting and maybe remove it from the agenda and just push it off to the next meeting. That would give me some more time to reach out and give us a little more time, you know, maybe at our next meeting to discuss again before we bring it back to the select board.
I, I don't think that's going to be any problem.
Okay. Cool.
And just to, the, the next meeting, the next meeting week for this select board and the planning commission, I will not be here for that entire week.
So I missed both meetings, Bill.
I, I, yeah, well, I won't be, I don't know if I'll miss them. I won't be here for them. So, but yeah, so it'll be the July 6th will be the next select board meeting that, that, I mean, we, I can, I can get stuff together. I'll be able to get information for them, but I won't, I won't have active participation in either meeting.
Well, I don't think this is a huge rush because it won't be until March anyway, that if we, you know, everyone does want to go forward, that it goes on the ballot. So I'm fine even pushing it further until you get back, if that works better. You know, I, I don't feel personally any real rush to get this wrapped up, if you guys don't mind.
It appears, it appears that we're just not ready at this point. Obviously.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Should I be reading anything else into this? I mean, is, is there any, any reticence about, you know, about going forward with this, other than just not having the time yet?
Well, for me personally, I'm not 100% we should do this. I'm more interested in, in looking into it as a possibility to help us, you know, get grants and become more involved with, with the town, but I personally, you know, I don't know if the, what kind of interest there is in people becoming a part of the commission. I don't have a, a set opinion on it yet. I'm just as much as everyone, just trying to gather information and see if this is something that we should recommend. So I, I haven't made my mind up yet. But I also haven't, you know, it seems like it's worth pursuing, but I don't have a position either way.
Dana, are you trying to, are you hoping to speak here?
I was just waiting until the appropriate moment. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, this is the appropriate moment.
Okay. It's tough when you don't see anybody on the screen, so you don't know. All I was going to say is that I think that there's a natural affinity and it, it would be a natural extension of the work of the planning commission. And it would provide an opportunity to help the planning commission to write grants, as Mary Beth mentioned, but also to do some work that would have a cultural, historic and recreational nature that would alleviate some of the work the planning commission does, but also allow for a group to take action on some of the things that the planning commission enforces and that the, that the select board adopts. So I, I think that it would allow for greater community participation in the development, conservation and application of land use. So I, I, I think there are a lot of positives favoring it. But as Mary Beth said, a lot of it has to do with logistics. And if people have questions, we should be able to respond to at least the theoretical approach to addressing those logistics.
I think that's well said, Dana.
Thank you.
You agree.
Yeah, so from where I sit, I think one of our next, once we finish gathering information about what other towns are doing, we should decide on the scope of this commission. How much power or how many, what we want this group to do? Is it going to be just recreation focused? Or is there going to be more to it than that? And, and, and do we take things from this list or from some of the other towns? So I think that's part of our next step.
That sounds good. I'll, so last time I had mentioned that I talked to Jen Murray, who helped form the Middlebury Conservation Commission. And she developed a, a work plan for the first two years, kind of a detailed list of items that the Conservation Commission would be working on. So I'll see if I can get that from her, and I'm sure ours would be a, you know, condensed version of that, but that, that may help us to have something on paper, what exactly.
Well, I'm a little.
The task would be.
I'm a little concerned, Mary Beth. I mean, there's, there's over 100 of these groups. So how you and, and we are going to pick the ones that we think are the best examples for Rutland Town? I'm not sure how we're going to do that.
Right, every town is so different and the ones that she suggested talking to are up in Chittenden County with a whole different right, population and, yeah.
Right. So I would probably go to more conservative areas of the state and see what's happening there as opposed to, you know, Chittenden County or even the White River Valley. And I would definitely throw in some smaller towns because this, we will be starting out small here. Very small, probably. Do you feel like you have enough guidance?
Yeah, so, um, maybe before I reach out to other towns, talking to Jens would be a good idea because he works with all of the conservation commissions across the state. So he would probably know who else might fit into like that narrow, similar to Rutland Town scope. And so I will try to connect with him tomorrow and just because we've been talking about setting up and it just hasn't, our schedules haven't worked out yet, but and maybe you and I can talk over email and which particular ones would be worth reaching out to.
Yeah, and, and maybe including a couple of those that are in the Rutland region, the Rutland area.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts from anyone else? Okay. You have enough to go on, Mary Beth? And, you know, we certainly could go back and forth on this, you and I.
But yeah, if you can move that until the next meeting that Bill's back on planning commission and select board. And I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, that's, that's no problem. They won't mind.
Okay, great, thanks.
And Bill, so six weeks from now, July?
Uh, July 15th is the, so June 24th, then July 15th.
So, okay, so somewhat related, but not entirely related. What about our next, what about June 2024?
Yeah, we, we can, we can touch base about that and I can, if, if, if you want to be here, I can get you instructions, how to set up being up here. It's pretty easy. Or if you want to do it remotely, you can do that too. Either's fine.
Okay. As long as it's. As long as it's easy.
Howard managed to do with with the fire fire district meetings. If he can do it, you can do it.
You think that's true, Howard?
That's, yep, that's good. It'll work.
Okay, um, so let's move along. Um, we're still looking at the airstrip and helipad ordinance. And I'd like to take another look at um article four, specifically four point one and four point three there. Um, remember, um, the head of the Vermont Transportation Board spoke to us, John Tocconi. So I did send this to him. He was, um, he had some input. He's a little uncomfortable, you know, doing much of that kind of work of so he didn't have a whole lot of comments for us. Uh, he did have one about the fuel storage and I'm trying to get with our fire chief about that. Uh, whether we do have some local restrictions on that. But I wanted to take a look at um, see if these two sections make sense with everyone. The four point one. We've got the A, which is list the land designation areas pretty much. Then we got B. For residential, A is is for um all of the land districts in the town. B is for uh residential. And so I just wanted to get everyone's take. B one. Um, should the landing and takeoff area be at least two point five contiguous acres? Is that too much? Any thoughts on that one? Any thoughts on two, which is um there, the landing and takeoff operational areas will be one hundred feet inside the boundaries.
Hi Barbara, this is Dana.
Yep.
The only thought I had is what was, what was the rationale for uh selecting the uh landing space? Do you know that? I mean, two point five acres seems like a really fairly large area that's and uh, just having it's with regulation, having a a dark helicopter land on a soccer field at the Woodstock Union Middle School and High School ground.
Uh, we lost you.
Would be huge. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yeah, I think
Yep, go ahead.
I think the rationale would be that it it provides as much privacy as possible to to neighbors.
Okay.
And that people, people putting in residential helipads or airstrips um, would have the acreage to do that.
Um, this is how I agree. Two point five acres is not a huge area. When you've got uh homes in the area, you've got trees and you know, the situations, this is, I think, for a little extra safety uh to get in and out of. I know you can land helicopters most anyplace, but for, you know, a common sense thing. You know, two and a half acres uh to me is not overly big, uh you know, would would work, but I don't think we'd want to crunch it down into an acre.
Yeah, and and this would be for small air, small planes as well.
Yep.
What's the size of that one that's up at the hospital that they use for?
That's, that's tight. The one at the hospital is is small, but there's nothing else around. I mean, they've they've got a lot of open space. There's, you know, parking lot, um, the uh regional ambulance building is is the closest thing, but I think, you know, the approach that they've got, they've got a huge area to approach it with, no buildings in the way. Um, whatever, but I don't know, you'd have to talk to a pilot to find out just what, what's a smart thing to do or not.
Yeah, we used to have one on the planning commission.
Well, that area also, yeah, for the hospital, pretty specific use. I mean, we'd all want to be able to have the ability to use that if we needed it. And I just think if somebody's coming in recreationally, I don't think this is a big burden to ask to have a, you know, larger area that protects their neighbors. I don't think it's a big deal at all. Two and a half acres, in my opinion, is about where it should be, maybe even bigger. So you know, just to protect the the other people from a noise and the everything else that goes along with it.
Yeah, since we can't really do anything about noise. Um, that's, that's a a federal decision only, not even the state can put in any uh noise restrictions. So there's, there's one part of section four point three that needs to that uh asked for a noise study. I'm not even sure we can do that. But your point is well taken, Jerry. We could make it larger.
I would move to make it larger, definitely.
Would you?
Just doesn't seem like a large enough amount of space. Um, certainly for a helicopter pad, but when it says, when it says for also takeoffs and landings, I mean, if you're taking a a strip of land that's you have a hundred feet on each side for bordering. And then if you say that the that the runway is a hundred feet, you're talking through a three hundred foot width. Um, that's gonna, and a typical, even a short runway is a half mile long. That's a, it's a whole lot of acreage.
Um, do you think five would cover it, Andy? Five acres?
I'm trying to do some fast math here on that. Um, and I don't have to have a calculator in front of me. But just how um if we take twenty five hundred square feet. Or that would be the cross section. And then we say two fifty. Well, let me just work on that for a minute if anybody else has any comments.
I'm sure that there's a lot of professional advice we could get to to help us with this. From pilots and whatnot.
Can you think of anyone offhand, Howard?
No, I, most of the ones that I knew have retired and probably moved on. Um, certainly we could touch base with the Rutland Airport and find find someone, or we can find somebody. I know through the military, we could certainly get get some information of there probably some local pilots in the area here.
Well, just on some fast math here, a two hundred and fifty foot strip two thousand feet long, about five hundred thousand square, which would be ten plus, ten, twelve acres.
Wow.
I don't know what a even a a very short strip would be, but I I I believe like Fairhaven Airport's half a mile and I think that's fairly tight for most, for most planes.
Do you think it's
What's the length of your strip, Andy?
I think two thousand, just because the math worked easily.
Mary Beth?
Um, do you think it's worth splitting up helicopter versus aircraft? I mean, maybe we should address both, but have a different requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think they should be separated.
They're two different animals.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a good idea. There's a small airstrip, ever on Route one hundred north of Pittsfield, uh, north of Stockbridge. There's a small, um, like little airstrip there that I would say Andy fits about the dimensions of your talking and that's the minimum. You know, they can just barely in there.
And one of my customers in Castleton has an airstrip up on the uh northeast part of uh Lake Bomazene. And I'll call him and ask him uh how big his, how big his strip is and everything. It's a beautiful view of Bomazene from there.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Okay. Okay, so um, yeah. Let's get a little more input for um the the next meeting. Um, I'll try to, you know, if any of these people want to come talk to us, that'd be great. Or if we just bring back information.
Barbara, this is Dana.
Yeah.
So I'm, I think I'm following the conversation, but there is a difference between a helipad and a runway. What are we talking about? I thought we were only talking about helipads.
No, we'd always, we'd always lump together small aircraft, small personal aircraft and helicopters in this because we we thought they both could become issues.
Well, first of all, first of all, they they both could become issues, but uh to the point that uh Howard and Andy and whoever else was chiming in. To land an aircraft, you need a whole lot more space anyway. And they couldn't do that if they didn't have the acreage. So that seems like it's almost a moot point. Whereas a helipad doesn't need nearly as much space to be able to do a landing. Somebody made a comment about that earlier.
Yeah, but Dana, don't you need to, don't you need to differentiate that, Dana, which we hadn't done yet? I think that's what we're talking about. If we don't do that, then, I mean, we can't just assume that somebody with an aircraft, especially the way that the world is changing and how these aircraft are gonna start. I mean, if you're seeing things on the news that
Right.
Small planes that the the props can turn and they can land, they're gonna be personal aircraft.
Yeah.
So I think we need to
That was the point, Jerry. So if the, if the point was to to differentiate the two within the ordinance, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think it is, Dana. I think it is now.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, no, that that makes perfect sense because um if you're talking about a uh small private aircraft, you need to be able to designate whether that is a vertical lift aircraft or whether it's a horizontal run air aircraft. Because one isn't going to be able to land anyway. And I'm I'm not sure, I I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking the question from a technical standpoint. I'm not sure that you need to be putting in place restrictions on a vertical lift uh aircraft as if it were a small horizontal run aircraft. I I'm just raising that question. I don't think it has to be one size fits all. And to someone's point earlier in terms of, although we can't call it noise reduction, but impact on on neighbors, you want to be reasonable in terms of of what you're uh promulgating as a, as an ordinance for the type of device that people are applying for. So I, to your point, Jerry, I think it is important to differentiate the type of aircraft and what would be needed for um for each one. And you may be right, whoever made the suggestion, more than two and a half acres may be what you want as any type of vertical lift uh aircraft. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, um.
Jerry, I know just the spot you're talking about on Route one hundred there and at best it's thirteen hundred feet long.
It it is short, Bill, but it's barely enough by what I've heard people talking.
I've seen planes there and they're not very big ones.
Okay, um, so yeah, if anyone knows of of pilots or or people with, especially people with with uh existing airstrips, if you have time to reach out, um, I'll reach out to Chris Batesal um at the airport, the regional airport. And either get him at our next meeting or or get some um advice from him. This is another thing, there's no great rush on on this, I don't think. Um, we don't have quite as much time as we do with the Conservation Commission. Um, but we uh, we've we've got some time for this. That do anyone, that number four under four point three. Is that that the helicopter noise study? I I think, you know, the airplane noise study would would, if we do that, we include both of them. But um if we can't really regulate this, does anyone see a need for that in this ordinance?
I was thinking about that as I was reading it, um. That that would be difficult for us to evaluate if we did get the study. I don't know. And then I'm not sure. But it would be something to ask.
Couldn't the study, couldn't the study be put onto the onto that particular, like we've done with other things, that the person applying for the permit would have to have that study done?
Yeah, yeah, it's it, that's where it is. It's under the requirements for the applications. You know, with the map and the site plan and and that sort of thing.
It it seems like since, since things are moving forward in this world so fast and and the potential for these new planes that they're talking of, I mean, we have no idea what they're gonna sound like. So if that ever happened five, ten years from now, it would be nice to have some mechanism there that we don't get have two and a half acres not be anywhere near enough, depending on how much noise they make. Something, you know, I mean, that that correlation between size, be nice to be able to have a mechanism to have them show us that that would be okay.
So maybe add it as a, as a, a May statement that they may be asked for a noise study. And then it leaves it completely open to the the whim of the application.
Yes, I mean, it could work.
We should just leave it in there.
We could still require it. We just, we would have that, it would be additional information for us. Um, it it's not, I think we wouldn't necessarily say no to the permit application because of the noise, but we could maybe with some additional study and some some more advice, know whether that's enough to handle that level of noise, whether the size that we're looking at. Um, I think that's why it got put in this one.
First guy in my mind.
Or we could make it a a May. Um, not sure anyone would do it.
No, I, if I may, I I wouldn't think May should be in there at all. It it, let's leave it in mandatory.
Yeah.
So it would, it would be something like the applicant will be required to do a noise study. Something like that. Is that what, is that what we're saying? That's what Andy.
Be, yeah. I just don't, yeah, I haven't really um figured out what we do with that information once we get it. And you know, even if it's like, oh, my gosh, I mean, this is like, this is through the roof noise. Maybe we build in we cannot regulate noise or the level of noise, the decibels. But maybe we could build into the ordinance at certain levels of noise. The airstrip or the areas around the airstrip have to be so large, have to be so big. We have different sizes. I don't know. It gets starting to get complicated, more and more complicated here.
Maybe that's
If we put it in and it gets, and it gets knocked down by some other authority, at least we tried to put it in there.
Yeah.
And it can't hurt anything and certainly knowing what kind of noise levels are gonna be created would be helpful, even if it if it ever does come to pass. And it can't hurt anything, and certainly knowing what kind of noise levels are gonna be created would be helpful, even if, if it, if it ever does come to pass. That we have to look at an application like that. I certainly think of the land in Rutland Town, and I don't think we're gonna have any airstrips there, but who knows?
It seems like the, the, the person from the airport might be able to put a little guidance on the noise if we speak with him.
Okay, okay, yeah. I'm thinking more that maybe we should try to get Chris to one of our, uh, future meetings.
He also may be able to really steer us towards whether or not, like Andy's saying, not only is the land affected, affected, but he may say, well, on the north or the, the east side of Route seven, there will absolutely be no strips anyway. I mean, he may be able to really kind of reel us in here, just given his, what the airport, how it affects our area anyway.
I like your phrasing, reel us in.
That's a good point, right? It would be a good person to run everything by.
Right.
Regardless.
Yeah, he helped us with the, uh, the lighting, the, the approach lighting issue in the town plan. Not, not issue. We wanted to put something in the town plan about that. So he helped us with that a few years back. Okay, okay, so a, any other thoughts? Comments, any on, on this? All right. Gary, none. Um, update on the Center Rutland Pocket Park of not a whole lot has happened since the last meeting. We have, uh, come up with a new map that we sent out. I, Bill sent out with, with the packet, the email packet. Um, that is, is out for comment from the recreation stakeholders. And after that, um, it'll be ready to go to a public meeting. But I'll, I'll wait and hold up and wait for the historical stakeholders group to meet and get their suggestions before, um, you know, scheduling a public meeting, so we can talk about both those things at the same time. So that's pretty much where that stands. The, the, the recreation people are looking at the list of things that we talked about at our meeting and seeing if we need to include anything or take anything out. So if you folks have any comments about that list, um, do let me know. And, um, I'm thinking probably a public meeting in, uh, early fall time. I guess once school starts and all that stuff. That's that. We're still working on, on the land survey, getting that out to someone to do, you know, approval by the select board for that. Anything on the Pocket Park? Anything else?
I thought the, the map looked good, you know, similar to what we came up with, but with input from other people, and I thought that overall plan looked, looked good.
Okay. Yeah, we're making progress. And, you know, just to refresh everyone's memory, after we do the public meetings, after we get some public input, we'll then pick a couple of consultants, one a recreation type consultant and one a historical one, and say, okay, the, hand them the list of stuff and the maps and say, this is what we want. Um, what kind of designs can you give us? And, and what are some of the price tags for those designs? And in the case of the history one, uh, historical one, it's like, can we do something besides just put signs up? You know, you, what is the technology out there? That can help with that. And, and one of them is, is, you know, uh, there is, there are online platforms where you can do a walking tour uh, with your phone or, you know, whatever you want to use. You, you can use it from home. Or you can go up to the park and, and, um, and there was, and if you want, it could be narrated. There would be pictures, historical pictures, which would have to be the case, uh, at the Pocket Park, because so much has, has disappeared. There's not much left there of what was there for all the history. So there's, there's, there'll be some options for the historical person to work with. Um, but when I sit down with that history group, it'll be figuring out what is most important to highlight that part. Because there are a lot of options. Okay. Announcements and news. Anybody have any news for us? Bill, I don't think there was anything else from the select board for the planning commission.
I don't think so.
Yeah, there was an interesting vote at the last meeting on the Declaration of Inclusion, um, which went down and in flames. Um, it was, uh, there were probably twelve people from the community, I would guess, there who came and, and this is, this is something that they're trying to get passed, uh, by municipalities statewide. Um, just saying that no one is, basically no one is excluded. Um, and, you know, there's no discrimination, um, in this town. It's, it's, you know, a message. It could be a marketing message, an economic message, and a, a social justice message. Uh, so it has passed in, in other municipalities, Rutland City being one. Um, but it didn't go, uh, it didn't go very far with the select board the other night. Put it down four to one. So I, I don't know if that's the end of that issue. We'll just have to wait and see. Anything else? That's going on? Jim, we haven't heard from you too much tonight.
What was that again? I couldn't hear you.
Oh, eh, eh, just, just checking in, haven't heard much from you tonight.
The only thing I've got to offer is that I've had a couple of discussions with, uh, Norm Cohen on the, um, items that he's looking for, for the, um, Energy Committee process. And I'm, I'm working on, um, that. And, um, nothing quite ready to put to print yet, but it should be soon.
That's great, that's great. Yeah, Norm is traveling right now, so yeah, we won't get to that until another meeting or two anyway, but excellent. Excellent news. Okay, um, let's, yes, Dana?
Uh, yes, Barbara, um, with respect to the, the vote the other night with, um, the select board, was there much discussion? And what did that discussion focus on?
It was a, it was a forty-five minute discussion.
Yeah.
Really? Wow, okay.
Yeah, um.
The video, the meeting video is on PEG TV if you would like to watch it.
Yeah, okay. I might do that. But just as an op, yep.
And, and there's quite a bit of it in your minutes, Bill. What would you say? That was about a quarter of it or a third?
It was a three hour me, the meeting was three hours and forty-five minutes of it was that topic.
Right, and your minutes covered probably, now.
Dana, the minute, the minutes were seventeen pages long for that meeting.
Okay.
There, there, there is some additional information, um, you know, if you want a short of her, uh, Bill's minutes are on the website.
Yep, I can take a look. I was, I was just wondering, um, in, in twenty-five words or less, what the substance or the topic? Well, I know what the topic is. What, what the substance of the debate?
Well, the, the debate, the discussion started with a motion to turn it down immediately.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, and, um, the, the reasons, there, there were several. One, by the person who made the motion to reject this, um, this proposal, uh, was that th- there is not a problem in town. Um, it, this was a solution in search of a problem. And, right, and, and so, so, you know, essentially there's no racism or, or discrimination in Rutland Town. And then it, um, it also included, the arguments against this also included that this was not the, um, proper role for local government. Uh, and especially for a town that prided itself on a small, uh, uh, efficient government. Uh, this was, does that fall in the same category as fixing potholes? Or, I forget what else was mentioned there, but.
Okay.
Yeah, essentially that.
I get the point, yep.
And, and, and that one probably, um, persuaded more people than the first argument against it.
Um, yeah.
Although, uh, that's just conjecture on my part.
Sure. So, uh, how was the pro- proposal originally brought up? Was that, uh, a community member or was it, uh, brought up by? Did I get?
Andy, go ahead.
I said respectfully, we're totally off topic here. This, this really has nothing to do with the planning commission. What's with all due respect, I have to say that. I'm, I'm sorry. What happened at the select meeting, it, it does, it has no impact on what we should be doing today.
Yeah, and, and unless we want to, you know, uh, you know, opine or, you know, or respond in some way to, you know, i- if we did, if we did.
I absolutely, I absolutely would not. Just so you know. I wouldn't want to respond to any of that. I, I can't agree with Andy more. This has like zero to do with planning. Um, in my opinion.
Okay. Yep. That's, that's fair enough. Just, uh, just covering some, some news. So, um, yeah, hopefully those who do, did have, uh, questions about that, hopefully they've been answered. For this. So we'll move on, uh, to the minutes from May thirteenth.
Motion to approve, motion to approve the minutes, Barbara?
Okay. All right, any, any discussion? Any? Okay, we're ready to vote? Wow. Guess we really do need Norm for these minutes, huh?
Not really.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
All have seen.
Aye.
Okay, I think we've got everybody. Okay, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Howard. Okay, all right. Okay, so we're adjourned and we will meet on, in three weeks. God willing, that we can figure out the technology.